Good morning, it's nine o'clock July the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three and our regular commissar's court being is now in session. First item on the agenda is roll call by our county clerk Mary Jane Rodal-Monon. Mary Jane, good morning.
Good morning Judge. Judge Rattler.
Present.
Commissioner Mendoza.
Present.
Commissioner Morales.
Present.
Commissioner Solis.
Present.
And Commissioner Gasa.
Present.
We have a call, Judge.
Thank you, Mary Jane. Next time there's our invocation by Dr. Rajan Mittor, Commissioner George Appleton. Dr. Mittor, good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. We value your answer this morning, so we pray. Our Father who provides both rest and comfort, we come into your presence this day seeking your hand of guidance in the ever-changing atmosphere of our lives. May we make every effort to make you the unchanging foundation of our lives. Help us this day to see the decisions made today in this court will affect our todays and our tomorrows. So Father, we need your voice to be heard by our leaders. May you speak today to your leaders as you spoke to the prophet Elijah gently and quietly in the wind and not in the earthquake and fire. May our leaders be receptive to your voice this day as they seek to serve this community. May wisdom be granted to them, may patience be theirs, and may peace come from their efforts to honor you. And we thank you for your hand with which both leads and protects, and in Christ's name we humbly ask these things. Amen.
Amen.
Legitimately to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four, commissars, uh, communications.
Just back to school, it was a good event, good turnout. Thank you to everybody who participated in donations and stuff for the kids. I'm looking forward for new school.
Yeah, so what was that event held?
It was held at the community center, I mean, the open pavilion there at the pavilion. So they had little vendors and, you know, food and stuff for the kids to do.
Very good. So yeah, right around the corner, I guess, Commissioner, number fourteen, the fourteen, the school start? Well, I already school age kids anymore, so.
Lucky you.
Any other communications? Then just remember the heat.
Oh, yeah.
Hope you have done it in the next month. I don't see anything in the next two weeks, but the lake's been dropping. I mean, we're in better shape this time this year than we were last time. I mean, last year, we, but it certainly concerned me, but we're still able to draw a good amount of water, no, 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 having issues, I see our water plant manager there. The lake level is.
Is the rain set that came in April and May definitely helps us tremendously some of this year.
I did, we're talking about the lake, I want to thank Congressman Quea, he did, I read a flyer where he was routing an additional twenty-five percent to the budget of the body commission. So it's up to a hundred and almost a hundred fifty million dollars. And part of that funding included, well, touched on the agricultural leases, the ranching leases for the ranchers and, and those are moving forward. I've been talking to ranchers who are receiving their, their new leases from, from the International Body Water Commission, so it's a very good development.
That's it.
They'll have additional funding, I think they receive additional twenty-five million for the year for their operations, so I thank Congressman Quea on his efforts on that. Any other communications? Good night, morning Karen.
Good morning Judge, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Step to my finger. Well, the second page is on the other side.
Yes, yes.
That's correct, it's in the back.
It's front of the back. There was to the print, the agreement office before had approved, so.
Yes. We know for the time.
For the fireworks, yes.
Yes, so I'm just providing you with the invoice, so.
As a matter of favor, are we approving this for payment?
You can put it for payment. How are you paying it?
No, we haven't, you haven't. I've paid it, but you haven't.
It's included in the invoices.
There we go. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you Karen.
Any other communications? I see Dr. Mittor, I don't know if Dr. Mittor, I could donate some to your family.
I think, I think they appreciate you then.
Loaned.
Yeah, but it's a prize.
I know, it's still young, but the courage of working, I'm just thanking you everything you do for us. We'll move on to public comment. Decision provided public the opportunity to address the commissar's court on any item on the agenda. Members of the public, what to discuss the court. If not, we'll move on to item number six, approval of invoices. And we have invoices from seven-seven twenty twenty-three through seven-twenty twenty-three for a total of five hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and ten dollars and seventy-four cents.
Does that make a motion that we approve and to add the twenty-five hundred dollars for that invoice that was presented this morning from Ms. Wester?
Motion, Dr. Commissioner Mendoza, seconded by Dr. Commissioner Solis. Any discussion, although in favor say aye. Motion carries. We've got next item to the pool of checks and we have checks in your package from seven-seven twenty twenty-three through seven-twenty twenty-three. And also for a total of five hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and ten dollars and seventy-four cents.
Motion to approve today.
The addition, yes, the addition of twenty-five hundred dollars, okay. So we have a motion of Commissioner Mendoza, seconded by Commissioner Solis, although in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll move on to reporting presentation and we've got Mr. Francisco Montu, professional engineer for Texas. And he's gonna give us an update on Texas army projects in Zapata County and our area, I guess. Give him one, sir, how are you?
Good morning, doing well. How about you?
Good.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here to present to you. I know it's been, it's been a few months already.
Yes, it's been a few months.
I went to judge, I met with somebody personally, and it's been very good updates, so I'm happy to be here to present to you those updates.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In my role, just to, to, for everyone knows, right, and I notice new commissioners, basically I oversee construction and maintenance activities for Zapaqua and also for neighboring rural counties, so three other counties as well. And so my focus today is going to be Zapata County, right, all the, all the construction projects that are coming up. And then we can all talk a little bit about maintenance activities or, or the, I have you all on top of.
Absolutely, thank you.
So the first, the first project, it's a series of projects, is the US eighty-three Delight Highway, right? So basically our goal in Texas is.
Commissioner, can you shoot the line?
Yeah, you should have a, a white paper about the US eighty-three.
Yes.
Right, and that has very detailed information, but I'm gonna be going over some, some general, general topics about it. And Daniel Lopez is telling me, right, he's our lead engineer also for our office, so he helps with the construction projects as well. All right, so, okay. So US eighty-three, I don't go over the list very briefly, I don't go over all the details, but we have the project, which is the zero forty, it ends in zero forty. So that project is the one that's coming up the soonest, and it goes from the Chihuahua area, F twenty-two, eighty-seven, to the north. Okay, so it goes about six miles, thirty-five million dollars. And basically, again, the scope of, or the, the goal of this project is to divide eighty-three, right? Either with, with the grass median or pavement to increase safety and mobility, right? And so that project actually got awarded already, and that one got awarded in May of twenty twenty-three this year. And so the expected start date of construction is September twenty twenty-three. Okay, so I know you all see out there maybe the utility companies, right?
Yes.
Seen them already, okay. The actual construction is in September, so it's coming up very soon.
Around the corner.
Yep, right around the corner, the, the contractors, IOC Construction, right, they're the same ones that have the project in the Stark County as well. So they're already in the area, they're familiar with the area here. Any questions on that project?
Just on the, I know some of the material, the caliche based material, I think part of it is being drawn by, by, through our county roads. I don't know if we can, if you can urge the contractor that maybe we can develop a, an agreement that to help maintain that road, it's in really bad shape. Because those caliche pits, for lack of a better word, are, are deep inside, close to, close to the lake. If they're gonna use the same caliche pit, I'm not sure, but certainly would help if they could help us maintain that road and, and once they're finished, to leave it in better condition than, than when they found it.
That's a great point. We don't have, obviously, jurisdiction over that.
Right.
We have to talk to them.
Yeah.
And if, if they've done some, something to it, and we'll be talking to them about it because there's more concern. That's a great point. And let us know about that, people, people updated and.
If they're gonna use the same, same source.
Right, with that, I don't have full details, I'm not sure. I'm assuming they probably will.
There's a good possibility that they're gonna use the same pit, Judge. We have been in communication with the supervisor for IOC. We remind them just to keep it closed out, the condition of that road.
Okay, appreciate that.
Is that the one that runs through two and twelve and eleven?
Yeah, great, great point, great point. All right, the next one is the zero sixty-four, so it's the last digits, last three digits of it.
Okay.
And that is three point six seven miles south of FM thirty-one sixty-nine, so it's a nothing, it's over, and it goes south for six miles.
Okay.
So thir- sixty-three million dollars, and the letting date is January twenty twenty-eight, so about four and a half years right from now. So, so again, same, same scope, same, same goal as well, and that's the second of the list.
That one has been awarded as well, or it's under work?
Not yet, yeah, that one's in the works.
You said it was projected twenty twenty-eight?
January twenty-eight.
January twenty-eight.
So it's basically from Ramírez, you, south?
Right, basically, yes, that's correct.
For that, yeah. So that'll improve the renovation or new bridge at Burro Creek?
Yes, if that's, if it's in the limits, it's, and all that has to be moved to be repaired.
It'll become a fourling.
Fourling, yes, yes.
See, that's, there's hills and turns, it's difficult to get around through those, the clouds anyways.
Yeah, because I think from forty, maybe that way it's already a fourling, right?
Right.
Like right before saying nothing.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, so we're completing basically that, right, the fourlings.
That's a good, that's a good project.
Yes, the next one is the, it ends in zero forty-three. And so that one goes from basically Lopeño area to the south, right, so South Lopeño Avenue to the south, three point sixty-three miles. And it's thirty-seven million dollars. Now, the letting of that one is in twenty thirty, so January two thousand thirty, so we still, it's still quite a while from now, right? Now, I'm still presenting on these because sometimes we get the funding and it comes sooner.
Yeah.
And so don't be surprised if all of a sudden that happens and we start getting all these urgency.
Okay.
Are these ones part of the general government infrastructure, what, I'm trying to, there was billions of dollars awarded?
You know, I'm, I'm not too sure, I don't, I think, I think this is another type of funding, honestly.
There may be additional money.
There might be additional, exactly, we can tap into it and accelerate it, yes. And so that's, that's again from the Lopeño south. And then the next one, which ends in zero forty-one, is the Lopeño area to the north. So that's four miles, a four mile stretch, thirty, thirty-seven million, and January twenty thirty-two. Okay, so that's right after that other project.
Okay.
So, once we complete those four that I just mentioned, we just basically, basically gonna have two gaps. And those, those gaps are basically other bridges or other areas that are missing, and those are a couple, there, there's two other projects there, it's zero forty-two and zero forty-four, that you can see in the list. And that's a total of nineteen million, so there's modern projects and they're scheduled for January twenty thirty-five. So that'll be to the very end, our focus first is the big, the big segments, and then at the very end we'll do those gaps that are there.
Right.
So total of six projects and, and, and actually, I did not sum up the whole total, but it's probably close to, what is it, like a hundred and fifty million or something, right, so.
So that's for all six, a hundred and ninety-one million?
A hundred and ninety-one?
Yeah.
So yeah, so that's probably the closest estimate, yes, I did not sum it up, so you know, I was gonna make some math, but it's a lot of money, right, a lot of money.
Yes.
Lot of projects showing up the county as it continues to, to, you know, increase the, 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 the track, right, there's projects are here from the valley or whichever.
Yeah, I guess the loops, very the valley, those, those will be important for, for commuters going south and.
Yes, yes, so it's coming this way, right, so that's the goal.
I wanted to thank you on thirty-one sixty-nine, that seal code really, really made a difference on the roadway.
Yes, so, yes, yes, that's a goal, and, and in fact, I'm not sure we ran out of preventive maintenance projects, because there are a lot. But that we're gonna continue.
Yeah, that seal code really helped, Commissioner. Is there any possibility of ever extending that thirty-one sixteen all the way to three fifty-nine?
Ah, that's a long stretch, that's a long stretch.
Right, that would help the commissioner. Texas hopefully in the future.
It sounds like a good idea.
Hopefully in twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, it's a long stretch though, and I'm not sure how the, the creek's there, or.
Well, yeah, the commission is tasked with maintaining that road, it's, it's a tough road to maintain, with limited funds, so. Well, that's where some of the, maybe the maintenance comes, yes, come up, maybe there's some maintenance material.
Yes, in fact, I do want to cover actually that project, so we do have the reconstruction of thirty-one sixty-nine scheduled, can cost fifteen million. And that's, that's actually letting, at least right now, projected to let January twenty thirty-one. So, eight years from now, we'll reconstruct it completely. So that, that will eliminate, you know, maintenance issues, and it will also lighten it a little bit, so we'll have a better road. So that, that was here on the list, and, and actually, I do have the last project here, and Judge, I know we talked about this one, it is, it is on the letting list, and that's from the Millennium Bridge south.
From the, yes, yes.
You reconstruct Indiana shoulders and all that, so it is, it is on the letting list for October twenty twenty-nine.
Okay.
Okay, so it's about six years away, and so that's gonna be seven million dollars.
If we could get sidewalks out through Buckneck State West and East, all the way maybe to Sista Shores and upgrade that road, there will, it would allow. Yes. You don't want to go into Sista Shores as well?
Is it a state?
Now that we're asking.
Incidents of construction and some.
Well, I'm glad some of this, yeah, I think, yeah, we've, we've been talking about it for a good while.
Right, yeah, so it is, you just got pushed a little bit, a little bit back, right? And so that's all, all the projects, as far as construction, major projects, right, that we have scheduled. On, on the maintenance side, just a reminder on the local government assistance program, right, for the millings and all that that we mentioned, so. I know Fred Lopez is not here with us today, but he, he's the one who is mainly looking at the amounts and everything. With the construction coming, I will say take advantage of that program, right?
I think they are working to mobilize, we should know you've been doing.
Yeah, I had talked to, I talked to him before the court started, that maybe we can do a, you know, a little, with the contractor, talk to him to see if maybe we can split it, instead of them driving, you know, twenty miles that way, they can drive ten this way.
Okay, yes, we'll, we'll take advantage.
We want to thank you, Frank, Danny, if you're in my channel, you guys have been helping us tremendously, we're currently calling material from one of your other projects, so that has come in handy to help us maintain our bridges.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all as well, thank you, appreciate it. Are there any other questions or comments as far as Texas, for you?
Thank you for your services, Danny, thank you, you're always a phone call away and, you know, we call them and it gets it done.
Likewise, I give y'all my best as far as most of you, so if y'all can contact me as well.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, thank you, Danny.
Judge, if we could revisit line item six and seven?
Okay.
The invoices? Yes, the twenty-five hundred dollars was made to the American Union, it's in the treasurer's office, we're just pending this release. So I just want to, it's on page eight if y'all want to look.
Okay, so we're just going to average it on about Mary.
Correct.
Got it, yeah, thank you.
We're just pending the, the invoice.
We'll move on to the action items, will everybody consider action item number nine, is to consider hiring for the Lord of Bets and Misses regular assistance log, as advertised, Commissioner, we'll, we call this one to executive session.
Yes.
Item number ten is to approve code in the amount of four hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty-one cents to United Ag and Truck for car to repair the fairway cutting lower unit. Motion by Commissioner Solis. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Mendoza. Yeah, there, there's gonna be a, a string of these expenses here at the golf course, commissioners, I think, you know, when we took this over, the, the golf course had, had been, and. I just, lack of a better word, neglected for a few years, so we, we, it's gonna take a while to bring it back, but we'd be making substantial improvements to the golf course. And, and, but we're gonna need some equipment, there was virtually no equipment to, to maintain the golf course. And, and part of this invoices or charges that we're gonna prove today is, is just trying to get it to a, a place where we can continually maintain and attract more, more players to the, to the golf course. But we're sure, if it can work you well, we're, we're doing a good job on it, and, but we are spending some, some money that I think are hopefully be in one time for, for a good while. I saw two gentlemen out there yesterday morning, they're actually from Montana, so they're pretty happy with the results. The greens are looking very, very good, amen, with these very hot and dry weather that we're, we're keeping them up and they're, they're cooling our daily cases, and some of these charging rules will be for that. But yeah, it's, and, and the, the golf course does produce revenue, as far as tax payers that are here. So we do have a, some revenue stream coming to the county to offset some of these costs, but certainly we're spending more than what we were saying beginning, but it is a very nice area. At the beginning, yes. So we've got a motion and a second, although in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item number eleven, to approve payment to the Texas Border Coalition for county membership dues for fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Mendoza, and seconded by Commissioner Morales. Let's see how it's, they are, if the fees are here. For many, many years, six, six, six hundred and ninety-four dollars, and that's a yearly membership. Of course, with the, the Border Coalition is a member of, remember the cities, counties, all along the border, and we seem to get more done when we're working in unison and as, as one. So I, I think it's worth the investment of six hundred and ninety-four dollars to be part of that coalition. I think the current chairman is a county commissioner from El Paso town, so, and, so we will continue to be part of that coalition. Item number twelve, we got a motion and a second, although in favor say aye.
Aye.
I have a motion carried. Number twelve is to approve payment of an invoice in the amount of two thousand thirty-six dollars for the aerification of the Los Alamos Golf Course. Motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Solis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gasa, basically, Commissioner, this was turf crunchers, basically came in, they, they have this special machine, and this is for all the greens. To, to make sure that the greens continue to, to get better, and it's part of the process, so it was an, an amount of two thousand thirty-six and thirteen dollars.
Thirteen cents.
Thirteen cents, I'm sorry, thirteen cents, although in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number thirteen is to approve an invoice of, for twelve thousand four hundred dollars to Zapata Creek Air for replacing two two-ton systems at the Los Alamos Golf Course. Commissioner, we had, both of them went out, the, the two central air units on, on the, the clubhouse, which under our agreement with our vendor, the county is responsible for the main electrical units. Any major damages to, to the building, so we've got a ten-year warranty on these two systems, so hopefully we'll, you'll be good for ten years. Motion to approve by Commissioner Solis, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Gasa, although in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number fourteen is to approve payment of invoice in the amount of seven thousand dollars to Premier Engineering for surveying work and plans at Zapata County Boulder Grant from line item three five zero six hundred four three one four zero.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, seconded by Commissioner Solis, and, and this is part of the five hundred thousand dollar grant that we received, right, for Texas Parks and Wildlife. Is it the initial, and then there's a second one that we have to, I think this is the initial planning grant? I believe it's a hundred and forty thousand. Yes, so I think this is coming from there to the start. Are we asking for reimbursements on that?
Well, it's Colina Vargas, we haven't gotten any reimbursements on that one, but.
See, I know we, we, well, there's one, yeah, maybe, if you want to, this can, can help us, you're, you're on, on board.
Yeah.
So, so we're on the Boulder Grant invoice, we were talking about reimbursements. I don't, we haven't expanded very many funds on it, but I don't look, there's been any.
That's a Colina Vargas one, right?
That's right.
So.
There's a plan.
Yes, no, there hasn't been that, many funds expended on it, and on the reimbursements, it would have to be the project administrator that submits for the reimbursement on, on those funds. I'm not sure if he submitted yet on any of the funds that have been expended, I'm not really sure how much funds have been expended.
Yeah.
But I think maybe about maybe ten, twenty thousand dollars have been expended.
I don't know, how, how much was the total?
I think the, we had an amount for project development and design.
Two hundred and fifty thousand?
Yeah, two fifty, and then we had one for construction, and I think that was like another seven hundred.
Seven sixty?
Yeah.
Yeah, because this one is just surveying and preliminary contract for, they budgeted what, fifty-four thousand for it? That's what it says there.
We had, we had presented that one, I think, at the previous meeting, and I think it's just.
We just, I'll, I'll keep with Mr. Vargas, Colina Vargas, yeah, we need to get with reimbursements and what we can. Motion to approve it? Motion to approve, and we had a motion and a second, although in favor.
Yeah, it was Mendoza, right?
Seconded by Commissioner Solis, although in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number fifteen is to approve code in the amount of one thousand hundred and thirty dollars and fifty cents to Superior Silica Sands. Or a load of USDA top dressing mix for those, those Alamos Golf Course, so basically, we did the aeration of all the greens, which are ten greens. Now we need to cover them with, with this dressing, so allow those greens to continue to. And I think we're gonna build a sandbox, we have the sand, we currently have the sand in the parking lot, so we're probably gonna make a sandbox. And I asked the vendor there, the operators, to, there, I did see some sand there. He says that sand was ordered before and then it's not the right time for the greens, we can probably use that for the fairways. So we, maybe approvals can help and, and, and especially on, on the, on the fairways, but the greens take a.
A finer grain.
A finer grain, takes a finer grain. Motion to approve? Motion to approve by Commissioner Solis.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mendoza, although in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and I think, I know we ran over our line item a long time ago, but we'll keep track, see how much we can spend on, on, on these improvements to the golf course. Item number sixteen is to consider the purchase of a used John Deere nine thousand nine A rough mower and a used John Deere two sixty S L walking greens mower for the Los Alamos Golf Course. I, I, Commissioner, I think, I would recommend that we only purchase the, the walking greens mower this time, which was.
What price?
Thirty-two fifty.
Thirty-two fifty.
Yeah, thirty-two hundred and fifty, we do need that one to, the, the current greens mower, which is a, a very specialized mower, is, is in almost non-working condition. That is a riding mower, this would be a walking, it's, and apparently, according to, to the operator, this would probably be more appropriate, it's, it's a, it's a finer cut, and, and you don't do any damage to, to the greens. I think we can hold off on the, on the rough mower, we have the stands that we purchased. Exactly. So I make a motion to approve thirty-two fifty for the walking greens mower. Motion by Commissioner Solis.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Mendoza, although in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Seventeen is to consider a first amendment to a lease agreement between Zapata County and Spectrum Golf Coast for the four oh six East First Street site in Zapata. So apparently they have the tower, I guess, on First Street, there, we approved a one-year agreement last year for thirteen hundred dollars a month rental. For the site, they're, they're wanting to extend it for another year, and they're watching this.
Is this someone that's always parked there?
Yes, and they're offering to pay the same amount, I mean, you ought to consider going up, or you want them out, so I just.
Just right by the, right, the one that's right by the other one?
Yeah, I think eventually they say they're gonna remove it, and let's see if I can see it. Is it only for two years? Yes.
Twenty twenty-three to September thirty, twenty twenty-five.
Yes, it'll be for additional two years, then we can go one year.
Here's, I think, considering that everything has gone up in cost, I think we can increase the amount to maybe two thousand a month, I'm sure they can afford it.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza to increase the rental to two thousand dollars a month, is there a second?
Okay.
For, and this would be for one year or two years?
We can go one year.
What, for one-year extension, seconded by Commissioner Solis or Gasa? Solis, although in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, so we'll, we'll let her know that the court has, the rental is two thousand a month for one year. Okay. Item number eighteen, to advertise for proposal to solicit response. Okay. Item uh number eighteen, uh to advertise for proposal to solicit responses and other documents from the Internet service provider for Zapata County broadband expansion. I don't know, Commissioner Raza, you've been working on this.
Yes.
So there's significant amount of funding that is headed, federal money is headed to all across the nation for broadband expansion. I think one of the prerequisites is that we get uh RFPs to to all those providers in our area. So this would be the first step in in getting that done. We we do have some sample RFPs that we'll be using that uh uh we received from the South Texas Development Council, so.
Yeah, from the fund, one of those is.
So we'll just get them out, see who's interested, and I know we have Spectrum in our area.
Uh we have Spectrum currently.
And Hillary Communications.
Probably AT&T and I don't know, it's a border-to-border where now it's called.
Hillary, Hillary. So uh yeah, we'll uh we'll put these RFPs out as other counties in in the state are doing. And I think by next year, you're talking uh, what was the number, five billion?
Something to that effect. About five billion dollars' worth of uh funding that will be available.
For statewide, for those areas that are are lacking uh.
And then they have like communication maps where it shows you, okay, this area is the one that's most in need. So you go and search, you know, what areas are most in need and they come into the surveying course. So we can get good broadband in here. It'll significantly like help the school districts and, you know, areas that are poor in communications.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Mendoza.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Solis. Although in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number nineteen is to approve payment of twenty-one hundred to Avilavam Mendoza for work on on the dipping back number two. And Commissioners, uh those pins are in need of 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 additional repairs uh in the actual bat, uh cattle, the tick inspectors advised me that cattle were were uh getting hurt on uh one of the.
Drop.
Yeah, the drop in into the back, so they're adding.
Is that the one here on four ninety-six?
They're adding that some a grid, a metal grid to to so they won't be slippery as much.
Motion by Commissioner Raza, seconded by Commissioner Morales. Although in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'll let State Judge for that one.
Commissioner Mendoza, change from uh. Item number twenty is to appoint Google and Saldes County Auditor as the financial officer for all office of the governor grants with the exception of Operation Lone Star. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Raza. Uh Monsalves, I think uh that those grants, uh we have a meeting with uh the administrator for the Operation Lone Star on on Friday and uh there are deadlines uh really approaching fast for a significant uh signif- effective.
Significant, yeah.
Money funding that has not been uh spent uh by the Sheriff's Department. I think you've got thirty days to spend several million dollars.
I I've been in in conversations with Roxy and Joel Pena on on getting that, so we'll we'll work on that this week.
So there's the adjacent uh county uh funding that that's part of it. And of course, the Operation Stone Garden, uh we never received any reimbursements uh for the whole year. I I wonder if you can look into that to see if that reimbursement had been said in. Uh that was forward time that the county has been paying for the whole year and haven't received the the reimbursement on it. And also, uh uh there's uh several other grants that the the sheriff uh can uh expend funds and and we've got till what August thirty-first to to expend those funds, so.
And and I talked to Roxy last week and or Miss Elizondo and uh since you're the administrator, it's it's very easy to just put me on there. It's not gonna be a, we have to wait or anything. It's a, you can get on the computer and do that, so.
Okay. Alright, then a motion in the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty-one is to approve the transfer of Marlo Pigler from the sheriff's deputy to Zapata County Attorney Investigator. The position is to be paid at the previously budgeted Ole Miss drag slot along with all fringe benefits for the Zapata County Attorney's Office. The above registered slide is to be funded from Operation Lone Star Grant as awarded.
Motion to approve.
Second, second motion by Commissioner Mendoza, second by Commissioner Morales. Although in favor say aye.
Aye.
There's Marlo, uh I've been seeing Marlo in the courthouse for a day because get to see young faces in the in the courthouse. Item number twenty-two, to approve payment to border pool maintenance and supply for repairs to the Valadajupé and Día Martinez food complex in the amount of ten thousand nine hundred.
Uh Commissioners, we did verify, Mr. Monsalves did contact the vendor. There was a slide uh discrepancy on one of the invoices. The actual amount is ten thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars. Uh that covers, of course, repairs to two filters, two pumps, and of course, supplies that we're needing for those new filters as well.
I I called him, Judge, uh last week, talked to him a couple of times. Uh to have an explanation why there were two twenty-eight hundred dollar invoices and two twenty-six fifty invoices, uh the twenty-eight hun- and then in talking with Alex Garcia, um the crew chief for precinct one. The first thing that went out was a ten horsepower motor uh pump, which is in that mushroom pool area, and that was the first twenty-six fifty. After that, that was uh the invoice for March thirty-first. Uh after.
That's fine, but is there any serial numbers, any warranty on this? It just, I mean, replace a pump, what what pump? Do we have a warranty on these?
On on these things, yeah, I didn't I didn't ask him about that.
I I mean, you know, if we replace an air conditioner, you get some type of warranty on it.
Usually the the pumps have a one-year warranty, just.
It doesn't say here, Commissioner.
It doesn't say on the invoice, but that's what we've dealt with in the past.
I'd like to see in more specific, see exactly what pumps there are.
I can do that.
What filters, so I I'd like to table this uh until we get further uh definite information of what we purchased.
Alright, yeah, I can do that.
There any motion to table?
Motion to table.
There's a second?
Second.
Second. Although in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty-three is to approve payment to R E P and P Incorporated in the amount of one thousand one hundred and thirty for the installation of a commode indoor adjusted to the precinct one up.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza.
Okay.
Second by Commissioner Solis. Although in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Twenty-four, to approve the renewal rates for the emergency dental and vision for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Very uh.
Morning Judge.
Morning.
I do correct you on the renewal. Um the renewal they call it like uh from currently we pay twenty-five seventy-six and be going up to twenty-seven thirty-six.
Okay.
And it's basically due uh to the claims. So we we have not seen an increase in this uh policy for quite a significant amount of years. And well, maybe over five years that we haven't seen an an increase. So for this one, that's the dental. The vision did stay the same at seven thirty-two for the employees, so we won't see an increase to from the dental.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Raza. Although in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number four, to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four paracope change renewal that presented. This one or not, considerably.
Yeah.
Yes, uh Judge, uh we like we've seen every year, uh the renewal is we see an increase. This year it's about a six point two percent increase from last year um for employees. So um current rate uh that we are paying right now per employee is seven hundred and ten point sixty-eight. Uh the new rate will be seven sixty-one point four.
Is there a reason for that? Was there any explanation from TAC?
No, basically, it's just the whole uh they gather all the claims for everybody.
Do we have a lot of claims in our?
Uh yes, we did see a significant, not a lot of claimants, but the claims that we did have were pretty significant in cost, so that's why we are.
Yeah, I was speaking to the the county judge from General County and they're low enough minimal, but I guess.
I don't know.
A little more healthy than we are, but.
Maybe because of the number of employees that they have, I'm not sure. And I don't know if they.
They have the same plan.
They they have the same plan as us. And we've been seeing every year it's about a six to seven percent increase every year with taxes.
Do we have the same acceptable, I think?
Yes, yeah, they have two thousand hundred, but they're the same.
They have the same plan.
Uh.
They're they're going up eighteen dollars. We went up fifty-one.
Forty-nine.
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's not, we don't have a choice. We don't have a lot of choices.
I know last year we did well for kids and nobody submitted any other um renewal document, so it's such as to TAC, so.
Yeah. Motion is by Commissioner Mendoza to approve the new rates of uh, well, if we look at the rates beginning eleven, one, twenty, thirty, three for the employee only, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and fourteen cents, employee plus children, one thousand two hundred and nine point ninety-four, employee and spouse, one thousand four hundred and fifty-six point zero six, employee and family, two thousand one hundred and fifty-six twenty-two. Does anybody have a whole family? That's.
We do have a couple in the area.
I hear one with unpaid insurance.
Yeah, yeah. Um we have a motion in the second. Although in favor say aye.
Aye.
By the way, the county paid ninety-five percent of the soli.
Yes.
Yeah. The county does, I think, the majority of on the on the employee only, of the seven hundred and sixty-one dollar. Alright, item number twenty-six, to award uh Tech Stop C P I S D A project contractor.
Monsalves, I know we redid we did this project a few times. We have, Judge. Finally got, I mean, I knew we got two bids. Alright. We submitted it to ten contractors that do this type of work within our area from Alice to Laredo to McAllen, and we had two bids that came in. On the project, before you judge the the items or the streets that are being covered under this, it is uh Metaflora Street from tenth to thirteenth street. We, from the previous bid, we we cut back the project so that we could get it within budget. Last time we only had one bidder. The bid had come in um way more than what the county had been had been awarded by Tech Stop. We got awarded approximately about a hundred and forty thousand and the bid had come in at around five hundred thousand. So um being that it was only one bid, we went ahead and canceled that bid and we rebid the project, but we made some modifications to the project. We reduced the amount on the Metaflora Street and on Pelican Street, the amount that was being constructed, so that we could get it closer to within budget. And I I spoke to the judge about it. We had uh considered maybe keeping it between three hundred and sixty, three hundred to three hundred and sixty in in that range. And uh we got two bids. One of them was from Muflon Oilfield Services and the other one was from uh C I D uh Construction Innovative uh Design. And the bid for um, the bid for Muflon is the one on your left-hand side on the bottom and then the one for Construction uh Innovation Designs is on the one on the right. The Pelican Street came in at one-ten for Muflon and two-sixty ninety on the Metaflora and one forty-eight and then one-twenty on the meters and ninety-eight uh for C I D. So for a total of three twenty-one, one seventy-nine fifteen on Muflon for the base bid and five oh seven nine forty-two eighty-four. I included the sections that I had removed from the previous bid as alternate bids, just in case sometimes when you rebid and we sent it out to ten bidders, one of the bidders might come in, you know, like really, really low. And I thought if the bid comes in within or closer to our budget for the full amount, including the alternates, we may consider awarding it as as it was initially intended. And so I have the two alternate bids on the bottom that we can either add or just leave off, but the base bid is the three twenty-one and the five oh seven.
And how much money do we have to work with?
One forty. So we, well, we had talked about three sixty.
Yeah. Well, I just, I know we spent, we went over budget on on precinct four.
Yeah, we were about seventy thousand and we had about forty-five.
Right, so I told you that.
Yeah.
The engineer will maybe, you know, kind of even it out, so let's work on a budget that everybody kind of gets the same amount of.
That's kind of what.
Close to, close to the same amount, so I guess you're looking at seventy, eighty thousand each.
Yeah.
Pretty much, so but so here we're going to, I think, a little bit higher, I think.
Well, we're going at about a hundred each, more or less, on average. And so that that gives us um pretty good. The main difference on the two bids was the uh on the on the Metaflora's and Pelican was the uh the Caliche and substrate compact compaction and the hot mix and the valley gutters. For some reason, the C I D Construction Company on the valley gutters, they put in eighty-four dollars a square foot, where, you know, Muflon put in like less than eight dollars a square foot.
You know what?
And I kind of checked to see if it was a typo, but then I, when I tabulated both of them, their total matched the eighty-four dollar, you know, per square foot amount. So I was like, well, it's it's uh, it's up there, so I, that was one of the.
So we're doing curb and gutter on on all of them?
No, we're doing, we're on on the Middle Street, we're only doing curb and gutter. We're not doing paving.
Right.
So we're adding curb and gutter. Now on Metaflora's, we're gonna move the pavement on a section of it and repave it, but we're gonna repave it a little bit wider. We're adding uh some some weight to that so that sometimes the kids are walking to school and there's a lot of um, when it rains, there's a lot of potholes and and.
Yeah, that's definitely needed.
That helps them. We're gonna stripe it. We wanna stripe it so that we have your twelve-foot lanes, but then you have about a six-foot shoulder.
That's the one that's gonna lead to the the park, right?
Well, it doesn't get over the park, but because we, but it was gonna be from tenth to thirteenth.
Oh, okay.
And so the school is uh between seventh and tenth.
Seventh and tenth.
And then so about a hundred and fifty feet or maybe about a hundred and twenty feet uh before it gets to tenth, that section was already, it narrowed up. So we started from that point and we took it through the intersection on tenth.
Okay.
And then we then went like another about eight hundred feet, six hundred feet.
Yeah, they couldn't move it, so.
That that's that's what we're planning on down. On Pelican, we had paved it with a previous C D B G funding.
Yes.
And we paved from uh four forty-nine six to uh, no, it's thirty seventy-four, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
From thirty seventy-four down to, I think it was Crow Street. So then from that point to the very end, which is Lake, Lakeview Drive, uh it's just a dirt road. So we proposed then, initially we had proposed to take it all the way to the end. This time we reduced it back to take it down to Peacock Street.
We'll be adding a little bit more to the street.
It's gonna be about seven hundred uh feet and on Metaflora's is also about seven hundred feet. So it's about two blocks, maybe lived with the Caliche base. The, we put in for the contractor to do the the base and and those types. On Second Street, the county had done the base work.
Yeah.
And so we could potentially reduce costs a little bit if the county crews can do some of the work. We may be able to reduce maybe about uh like maybe twenty percent. Yeah, and we can do some of the traffic control measures. There were some items that that we had looked at maybe doing.
And that's something we can, the Commissioners can get together with and see what.
Well, basically, that's what we did in Second Street, correct?
Yes, we did that on Second Street. We did the the base preparation and then the traffic control measures and then the hauling off of the excess material. So if we can use some of that, we may be able to reduce the cost.
Which is, yeah.
So we can, we.
You see on those paving, on the gutters, it'd be hard to.
That'll be a great.
Well, there's some materials to be hauled off on the gutter also, so they could probably reduce some on all three projects. We could then award and then if we award, then maybe uh try to then um reduce some.
Hard to replace some. I'll make a motion to award the Tech Stop paving project to Muflon Services.
Motion by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Mendoza. Although in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The amount is three twenty-one, one seventy-nine fifteen and then one with those eight foot.
Okay, see, I'm gonna give you more stuff. Okay, thank you, Mr. Vargas.
Thank you.
Uh all right, you got another one. Item number twenty-seven is to review construction progress for cargo and crane and approved natural conditions and invoices.
Uh I didn't bring any invoices for today, but on the project itself, the project is substantially completed, so I wanted to come and and report to the to the court on that. They've uh they've already paved the streets, they've added the concrete on the side streets. And so there's maybe just uh pending some, a bunch of this items to be done by us and the project administrator. And then they can do some final cleanup and and any, you know, checklist pending items, but we'd like to consider the project uh formally substantially completed.
I guess we just need to make sure all the paperwork is is also been submitted and corrected and.
Correct. So that, I'll get with the project administrator on that, so that we can then formally start closing off the project and uh start going through that process. It's it's, I think they are giving them uh sixty days to close out the project.
Okay, sound good?
Thank you, Judge.
Alright, thank you, Monsalves. So item number twenty-eight, so no, actually, as far as uh any invoices. Item number twenty-eight is to approve proposal for the Cisco Smartnet Technical Support and Malware Bikes Endpoint Protection for Zapata County Corrales. Item number twenty eight is to approve proposal for the Cisco Smartnet technical support and Malware Bikes endpoint protection for Zapata County Courthouse computer and phone system. Yes, Mr. Solis. I'm asking to be here because I have no way of explaining exactly what this means.
There's only uh two proposals. One is for the Smartnet, for the switches, for the equipment. And the other one is for the antivirus for the endpoint for the computers.
So this would be uh, this is a year D amount or?
Uh that's for a three year, three year better discounts, we go in three years instead of one year.
And is this a service we currently have, Mr. Solis?
Uh yes, the antivirus, right? That's one that we have for the computers and uh equipment is for the system equipment that we are using right now.
We have enough to pay our year basis, but this would be some added equipment, right?
Yeah, well, it is for for engaging break, right? Engaging breaks, those switches, they cost around seven to eight thousand dollars each and we have like four of them.
So it's like insurance.
So all of this is under warranty?
Yes.
So it's a total of twenty five thousand one oh nine?
Yes, but uh that's if we if we buy them, right? But this is for the insurance. It's like uh five thousand dollars for three switches and uh eight and uh nineteen, uh one thousand nine for uh less than nine hundred for the uh another switch.
Right, but what I'm saying is if we're approving both invoices that you're proposing, that we will both.
Yeah, twenty five one oh nine.
Yes, uh.
Does the total of twenty five thousand one oh nine?
Uh yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And this is coming out of where? So.
It's a fund out of. It's a fund out of. Yeah, we certainly didn't budget for this, but there is a, I guess, a timeline on this as far as.
Yeah, especially for the antivirus.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's it's needed.
Yeah, it it is needed. Yeah, this is needed, but.
There's expiration dates.
Yes.
There's a computer line out of it, it's just that it's like all the other ones, it's.
On the motion, Judge, that we approve, uh due to the severity of the issue here, that is something that is needed, so I'll make a motion that we approve twenty five thousand one oh nine for this.
Second motion.
It's a three year.
Medosa's thinking about commissioners.
Three year.
It's a three year agreement, so it's it's, it's good for three years.
Although the favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty nine is to approve interlocal agreement for nine one one public answering point services. I think uh. I don't have the agreement in front of me.
Is it something we were part of working on or?
Was he supposed to be here, Mr. Solis?
That was the last time the one that we tabled.
Oh, here it is. Yeah, this is the yearly renewal. The city of Laredo provides uh the nine one one uh force uh.
Is it possible or?
There is a theme, not substantial. I haven't, we'll just table this uh till we get a clearer idea of what's going on. We'll bring it back to the next table. Motion by, to table by Commissioner Solis. Second by Commissioner Gasa. Although the favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion table, I'll I'll have my information for the report next time. Apologize for that. Uh consent items, we have a uh item for the jail. Some prisoner medical seven thousand to general supplies, seven thousand. Motion to approve consent items. Motion by Commissioner Solis to approve the consent item represented. Second by Commissioner Morales, although the favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh we have a couple of resolutions. Before we get to uh executive session items, we got resolution to approve resolution in support of operation All Star fiscal year twenty twenty four. And this will uh.
Approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Medosa, seconded by Commissioner Solis, although the favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. This will set us uh on the way to apply for the twenty year twenty twenty four funding cycle. Item number thirty five, a resolution to appoint an local representative to the Rio Grande Regional Water Authority. Uh but it's the Rio Grande Regional Water Authority is is works closely with uh Texas Water Development Board. Uh we.
Who currently serves in that capacity.
Nobody. We we have uh for a while that the the board disbanded, uh the Regional Water Authority Board disbanded. There I I spoke with uh Commissioner Gasa from Cameron County. So they they it is in operation now and and they they would like to bring in a representative from Zapata uh to have discussions on on regional water interest in Hidalgo Star, Zapata and Way and Ann Arbor County. So it's kind of similar to the Region End Water Development Board, but uh it it's just another entity that uh looks to bring funding uh to our communities for regional water funding. Um the commissioner is interested in serving on the board. I don't know how how they meet. I imagine it's probably quarterly, weekly. I'm I'm on the Region End Water Board. We'll reach quarterly from time to time. Uh most of the time now there's a Zoom option, so I don't know if there's gonna be a lot of traveling involved. Uh but certainly if y'all are interested in.
Currently serving already in two boards, so. Commissioner Morales, do you think so?
I would just need to know that under meeting, and that's so.
Motion to approve Commissioner Morales to serve on this board just on behalf of Zapata County.
Second motion to appoint Commissioner Morales. Motion by Commissioner Medosa to appoint Commissioner Morales to serve on the Rio Grande Regional Water, Regional Water Board. Water Board, or seconded by Commissioner Solis. Although the favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We got to executive session items, uh item number, uh fifth, three? Oh, yes, three. Uh item number uh. Is item number nine, to consider hiring for the Royal Bridge Executive Assistant Squad as advertised. And then uh to discuss, item number thirty, to discuss property claim and take possible action on the matter. And then item number thirty one is an update on the border authentication. Motion to go on to executive session. Motion by Commissioner Solis to enter the executive session, seconded by Commissioner Morales. Uh we are not in an executive session, we die with the current under section five five one point zero seven one, Constitution with attorney. And also five five one point zero seven four, uh personnel matter. And we are not in executive session.
Hi.
Hey, Hunter, what's up, Commissioner?